Number sixteen.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Walt Jorgensen, most recently characterized as an estate speculator, who lives at 823 North Street in Tumwater.
Andrew.
I do own properties in Tumwater, Olympia, and the unincorporated portion of Thurston County. I should begin by saying please incorporate the proposed revisions into the critical areas ordinance. And as a property owner in those three areas, I enormously appreciate stewardship exercised by the three current members of the Board of County Commissioners, aptly advised by you. Finally, we have a policymaking body and a policy advising body that gets it and has the courage to act on their convictions and in so doing accommodate the preferences of the overwhelming majority of county residents. We are learning that we can't possibly understand all of the layers of interrelationships within ecosystem. We can however manage the lands in ways that preserve, restore, and mimic natural structure. This is especially important in our estuaries. And this is what makes it so critical for us to manage our critical areas so that what ends up in the estuaries is what they need to perform their function. One illustration of these kinds of mechanisms, I'm sure you recall, is the roughly constant temperature of fifteen degrees Celsius maintained on the earth's surface for the last 4.6 billion years, a range suitable for life to evolve and flourish. This even though the heat emitted by the sun has increased about forty percent. I wasn't here then, but my friend and scientist Harry Branch, well he wasn't here either, but he'll verify these facts. The question is what mechanisms could possibly maintain such a stable global thermostat? Really the question for us today is what changes do we think we can make to these mechanisms without causing irreversible damage? As our experiment evolves, and that's truly what it is, I suggest, as did my friend Eve Johnson, that we invoke the precautionary principle to be as sure as possible before the fact that we will do no harm. I will end as I began, and that is please incorporate the proposed revisions into the CAO. Thank you.
Thank you. Seventeen.
Good morning. My name is Robert Shilt and I live at 11329 Highway 507 Rainier. Forty years ago, I fought in a war to stop the spread of communism. And I never imagined I would be fighting that same battle right here where I live. The critical areas ordinance, as it is now written, contains language consistent with socialist ideologies. A number of non-governmental organizations advise the planning commission and the county commissioners. One of those organizations believes that the ownership of private property is a social injustice because it allows for the accumulation of wealth. The CAO and similar ordinances are just the beginning of the destruction of our rights here in Thurston County and clear across America as this organization presses local officials to put nature above humans based on faulty science. The organization I am referring to is the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, which Thurston County joined in 2010. It's also known by the acronym ICLI. It is a puppet organization of the United Nations and its job is to brainwash people into believing that sustainable development is a good thing. Stop taking our property is not a local phenomenon. There are hundreds of similar groups nationwide fighting to retain their constitutional rights in communities where ICLI has gained a foothold. In the last year, Clallam County, Waschuggal, and Squim have opted out of ICLI due to public outrage along with a number of other communities nationwide. Speaking of the Constitution, all local elected officials took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington. By supporting ICLI, they are violating their oath of office. If they can't be trusted to uphold their oath of office, what can they be trusted with? The goal of ICLI is to transform the world into a tightly regulated socialist one-world order. And I'm sorry to say that well-meaning people like you are being used as puppets to accomplish that. When Thurston County government forces a rural resident out of the community through draconian regulations, the fabric of the community is changed. We haven't lost just a neighbor, we very likely have lost a school bus driver, a volunteer fireman, a girl scout leader, or other valued community member. There appears to be a disconnect between local government and the rural people. Government exists at the will of the people and the proliferation of special councils, committees, and guiding groups with no accountability to the people is proof positive of government out of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Number eighteen.
Good morning. I'm Bill Robinson and I live on Thirty-seventh Avenue Southeast here in Olympia. And I'm to encourage you and I support the adoption and the update of the critical areas ordinances. In fact, I would probably go as far as saying that it's long overdue. It should have been done years ago, thirty, forty years ago. We wouldn't be facing some of the problems we're facing now. With the fellow from Realtor Association mentioned an historic number about how population's going to grow in Thurston County. We need to begin to be able to plan for that. We need responsible, reasonable growth that makes sure that when this does take place, that we do have clean water for our people, that we do have people out of flood zones, that are out of way of harms of natural disasters. We need, you know, the clean water, we need our wildlife, and just overall quality of life in this county really does need to be protected and thought of in the future. I don't know the details in this, a lot of people talk about more science, but I do know that there never is enough science to get anything done. If the results aren't what you like, you ask for more studies, more information to verify what you want. And probably it's just simply not available, it's not there. So I think you have to go with what's the best available science, what you have now to make your decisions and ask for them forward. There's a couple of things that I think really would be helpful on this plan. And that is, right now, people living in flood zones. There needs to be some way to help those people relocate out of those flood zones for their own public health and public safety. Some measures to do in terms of incentives, either using the transfer development rights or using some of your tax credits you have in the Open Space Act. Some mechanism incentive for people to move out of those flood areas. And also surprised to hear that almost seventy percent of our shoreline, the Puget Sound, is hardened with bulkheads. That does a tremendous amount of damage to habitat for our salmon and other fish species. But some type of basis to, an incentive for landowners to either repair those bulkheads or when they are damaged and need to be rebuilt, they use a different technology. There are a lot of different bioengineered mechanisms that allow bulkheads that are engineered or a natural type of surfaces that would allow to protect the shorelines for the property, but also maintain the wildlife habitat. So an encouragement along there would be very helpful. So that just a general, I think, here again, a personal visit here in Thurston County. General support for this and encourage you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Number twenty.
Thank you. My name is Dave Peeler. I live in the Griffin area on Fifty-fourth Avenue Northwest. And I'm also the Vice President of the Duchesus Estuary Restoration Team. I want to thank the planning commission for their work on this. I know this has been a difficult effort over a number of years. And also for the great amount of public information, or information you've made public on your website, it's just outstanding to go to the website and look at all the information that's there. Critical areas deal with fish, wildlife, water, geologic hazards, and public safety. This draft ordinance is a really good start and a real improvement over the existing plan. My preliminary comments highlighted today. We do need to increase the marine buffers in undeveloped areas. The one hundred feet would really not be sufficient in coming years given sea level rise and increased storm intensity. And I do live on a marine bluff and our house is set back a hundred feet. And I can tell you, I wish it was further every time I see a big storm coming in and you see the erosion happening on marine bluffs. And erosion is a good thing. It's a good thing for Puget Sound, it's a good thing for forage fish that feed our salmon. It's necessary. So we want to encourage people to move back and then discourage people from putting in hardened shoreline armoring. And along that particular area, encouraging soft shoreline armoring, i.e. bioengineering, is really the way the county should go. That it makes the most sense for the future of our Puget Sound shorelines. Owners of structures that are completely destroyed in a natural disaster such as floods should be encouraged to move back out of that area. Now, we've seen time and time again in some areas where people have rebuilt in floodplains. And in case you didn't know this, the public pays for the National Flood Insurance Program, underwrites it to the tune of about ninety percent. So we are actually paying the cost of that rebuilding time after time. We should encourage people to move out of those areas. Critical area, critical offer recharge areas do need to be protected. We also need to deal with all the waste that we all help to create. Whether you're on a septic tank or you discharge into Lot's facility, we are all helping to create the human waste that then goes out into the environment, either Puget Sound, our rivers, or into the groundwater here. So I hope that you will continue to work with Lot to come up with reasonable controls and expectations for how they can deal with their waste in the future. It's important to remember that Lot is really on the forefront of treatment technology for human waste. They're probably in the top two or three percent of all treatment plants in our state, if not the country, in their technology and their reduction of waste before it hits the environment. That doesn't mean it's perfect, it never will be, but we do need to make sure that we can deal with that. Restoration of the Duchesus watershed is high priority for my organization and for this county. This draft should help to reverse the decline that we've seen in water quality in the Duchesus watershed and to help protect the watershed health. I urge the adoption of a strong critical areas ordinance to protect our health, safety, and environment for now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Number twenty-one.
Steve Cross, 7649 Estway Southeast. I learned this summer, someone told me that if I cut down a Gary Oak on my property, I would have to plant eight more. I said, oh gee whiz, I just add that to all the list of things I'm not allowed to do on my private property. I'm not allowed to burn whatever I want and release noxious gases into the air. I'm not allowed to dump things on or in the soil that might contaminate the groundwater. I'm not allowed to build anything, not allowed to build it any which way I want. Now, are these rights taken away from me? I don't think so. I don't think I ever had those rights. I don't have the right to harm my neighbors or harm the community. I think what we're doing here is we're just recognizing as our society grows what impacts we have on each other. We're not taking these rights away, we're just realizing how we kind of have to moderate our own behavior to be members of society. I'm hoping that this ordinance will increase the value of my property. I have a mansion, the county says it's worth a hundred thirty thousand dollars. I'm hoping that ordinance like this will improve the quality of the county, improve the neighborhood, and improve the value of my house. So, thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-two.
Hi, my name is Susan Meckenson and I live at 611088th Avenue in Olympia. And I am here representing South Sound's ER group. And I just want to thank you for the work you've done. You've been very diligent. There have been so many meetings, the county commissioners have listened week after week to this issue. They've, you know, you've just had, you've been very open in this process and we really appreciate it and we want you to go forward with this process. It's really important that you go forward with this process. And the South Sound group is very concerned about our shorelines. And we, I think the one thing we really want to see as you go forward is that it's not just talk, that you actually do protect these lands when it's done. So, and then speaking for myself and Nazi Eric, I just want to again, thank you because I think I have heard you be called names from socialist to, you know, Nazis to whatever. I've heard you being threatened, I've been threatened, a number of people in this room have been threatened. We've had pictures of our license plates put up on the web. You know, we've had cameras shoved in our face. We've been called real estate speculators, which I didn't realize Walton, Sam, and Zena weren't real estate speculators. But, you know, and this is kind of what you've been up against, is name calling, just threats. And you've persevered through all this and I really appreciate that you have been willing to do that and I thank you and I thank you for not stopping the process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Twenty-three.
My name is Joe Piss and I live at 225 Seventeenth Avenue Southeast in Olympia. I'm heard to say that if the ordinance is to be adopted in its present form, if that's what we're really talking about, then I support it. I've heard a lot of suggestions for revision here today and if there is the time available to do that, I would support that as the very best way to get something that's workable. And basically, I think there's a few things we have to keep in mind as if there are some changes to be made. Any plan like this is bound to be complex, drive complex review process. The idea is, there's good complexity, there's bad complexity. Good complexity means that you adapt to the local situation and to the, and you try to be balanced and fair to everybody. A bad complexity is where you ask everyone to provide much more information than is needed to make decisions. So that has to be arrived at, that balance. Second, I think I've heard today that natural boundaries have to be respected, not just counties, not just property, but where does the water tell us that it wants to go? And that we need to try to make room to adapt to changing knowledge and new things we might be discovering. In the big picture, what I see is we can either agree to regulate ourselves now or if we fail to do so, then the economy will kick in with all of its fairnesses and unfairnesses and punish us if we do something wrong. Or as a last resort, nature will come in and have the last word. Nature always does. So it makes sense as citizens to get together. And I have two words to remember, that is build trust. That's what we really need to be doing. I think this process is doing it. I hope that everybody who participates and who is interested in working as a citizen will do all they can to continue building trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-four.
Hi, I'm Steve Langer and I really appreciate all of what you all have to do here as a planning commission and I appreciate the seriousness with which you take your duties in making sure that we have a good critical areas ordinance. I have property on Henderson Inland that I've owned since nineteen eighty-four. I've also owned a farm on Woodard Creek. For ten years, I was the Chair of the Henderson Inland Watership Council. And for six years, I was the Chair of the Henderson Inland Shelter Protection District Stakeholder Committee and later on, the Henderson Miss Wally Shelter's Protection Stakeholder Committee. It's kind of a mouthful. I, overall, I think that the critical areas ordinance has needed updating for over a decade. And that with the science that we now have available to us, it has provided us with the evidence that we need to create a better critical areas ordinance. And I believe that the current form of the critical areas ordinance is a great improvement over the prior one and it is way overdue. In particular, I support the buffer increase along the marine shorelines to a hundred to two hundred and fifty feet to protect the riparian areas as well as along the freshwater streams. On the other hand, I think that it's really important to have a no net loss policy for wetlands, even for very small wetlands, because they too can serve important functions. And so even if a wetland is a thousand square feet in size, it may actually serve an important function and possibly should be preserved rather than simply wiping it out. Overall, I also think that one of the big problems that the county has had is credible enforcement of the ordinance. And so having real enforcement teeth in the ordinance is really important to a good ordinance. Because I've seen many times even the ordinance as it currently stands being violated with essentially no consequences to people who did so. In addition, I really want to commend you as well as the county commissioners for the courage that you've shown to take up the updating of the critical areas ordinance, something that really has been overdue for a long time. I think that the critical areas ordinance is really important in retaining the quality of life for all Thurston County residents. It protects the natural resources that we all depend on and it really improves the quality of life for Thurston County as a whole. So I thank you for this and I hope that you can pass the ordinance, the ordinance revisions as they stand and then continue to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-five.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Judy Barden and I live at 3129 Holy Street Southeast in Olympia. And I want to say that I support the revisions, proposed revisions to the critical areas ordinance. And if you make any additional revisions based on testimony today, I want to urge you to take as precautionary approach as possible. And I have three sort of broad comments. First, I'm going to speak from my personal experience. Several years ago, I had a roommate and she was here from AmeriCorps. She was working for the Nature Conservancy and she was working protecting the prairies. And from her, I learned what a wonderful habitat the prairies were and how unique and that we really need to protect them. Second, I sit on the City of Olympia's Utility Advisory Commission, a board, committee, sorry. Utility Advisory Committee, sorry, I'm nervous. And I'm not speaking for them, but I've served almost a two-year term. And through my experience on the committee, I've learned how important it is to protect our drinking water and what a threat stormwater runoff is. And that the proposed revisions to the critical areas ordinance will help us protect both our drinking water and stormwater. And again, I want you to use a precautionary approach when you make, when you consider any additional revisions. And then I'd like to address climate change. We know about four years ago, the University of Washington came out with a report from the Climate Impacts Group. And they're, now, they were saying that we will have, as a result of climate change, we're going to have wetter winters with a lot more flooding and drier summers. They also gave three scenarios for climate change, sort of what you could think of as a low, medium, and high with high being the most severe in terms of the impacts for heat and flooding and sea level rise. And I heard a presentation given by Andy Howe from the City of Olympia. And he says that now we can expect in terms of sea level rise and flooding that we're going to have the worst-case scenario based on what the University of Washington has said and also a new study coming out of Vancouver. And that by twenty-one hundred, we may have a meter of sea level rise. So I think it's vitally important that the provisions of the critical areas ordinance be put in place to protect us from the impacts of climate change. That would be protecting our wetlands especially. And third, I want to remind you of something that Lisa Jackson has said. She's the Administrator for the United States Environmental Protection Agency. And I've seen in press releases repeatedly that she said that people want to live, work, and play in a healthy environment. And this type of environment where the air, the water, and the land is protected is good for the economy. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Twenty-six.
I'm Doug Carmen. I reside at forty-one oh eight Cairo Road Southeast in Lacey, or in the county part of Lacey anyway. My family is, you've heard this before because I've spoken before in front of you, but my family has lived on the shores of Long Lake since nineteen twenty-nine. I'm a native of Washington State. I've heard some comments today and other meetings of people that have moved here from California and say, I've got mine now, you can't have yours. I want to preserve the land and the environment of Thurston County just like everybody else in this room does. I don't care what side of the fence you're on, I don't think anybody in this room believes that we ought to rape our environment and destroy our water or our water table. I have also participated and been an officer of the Long Lake Management District where we tax ourselves to maintain the water quality of Long Lake. On the shores of Water Lake, Long Lake are wetlands, which we have also somewhat maintained. But one of my concerns there is there's nothing in this, in the CAO that protects our lake from the wetlands. The wetlands grow. When my wife's grandfather purchased the property in nineteen twenty-nine, there were very few wetlands on Long Lake because the railroads had dredged them all out so that they could float logs between the three lakes and build wooden boxes at the box plant in Lacey. Since then, those wetlands have grown back in, but they do infringe on the lake and keep growing into the lake. As we talk about climate change and how we will have heavier rainfall and warmer weather and whatnot, when the rain falls hard rather than the mist that we used to have, it runs off. It washes those wetlands into the lake, it washes muck into the lake, fills up the lake. And with that in mind, all of a sudden, we don't have a lake anymore. We have a mud flat that really isn't performing any healthy function. And for us to try to manage those wetlands, we're told no. Can't do anything about it because we got to protect those. I am a proponent of managing our environment, not protecting it. We are the highest level of thinking or whatever you want to call it, type of animal on the planet and we certainly ought to be able to pull together a consensus of what's the right way to do it so that we impact the environment and the people's lives as least as possible. Guidelines were provided to this group, fourteen guidelines in developing the critical areas ordinance. And five of those I don't think we've done a very good job of. One is encouraging affordable housing. This will definitely cost more. And my time is up, but I will submit additional comments more specific in the future.
Thank you. Twenty-seven.
Thank you. Twenty-seven?
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioner. My name is Scott Roberts. I'm the Planning, I'm the Property Director at the Freedom Foundation. And we have laws for the application of the CAOs, and we have, those laws also give guidance to local governments on the application of those. One of the most important of those is what you should have been looking at all along, which is the statutory requirement to review and, if needed, revise. And I've talked to you about this before. We have had a Critical Area Ordinance in place for nearly 20 years. Presumably, the precautionary principle was placed at that time when those ordinances were put, so that we would have no additional harm. Now is the time to review those thoroughly and revise them, excuse me, if needed. When the Critical Areas were put in place, what, why did we put them in place? And what performance measures and outcomes did we want when we applied those Critical Areas? How are we performing against those goals and application that we wanted to achieve? It's a question that you should be digging into and answering, and finding what part needs to be modified and what parts need to be relaxed in light of the precautionary principle. It seems like this, right now, we're in this overzealous application of rules. And the pocket gopher is a great example. So the pocket gopher is a new thing on the scene that comes up, and we apply the precautionary principle. But now, in light of new science, those things should be relaxed. The science that was put forth to the county was one that this was almost extinct. In effect, the new study that came out here just a few days ago said that the pocket gopher was found where it was said to be extinct. I mean, extinct is a fairly finite idea. It's extinct. There's no more. It just takes somebody to go out and look and find, oh, there's actually some here now. And that common sense approach is a good one for the Planning Commission to do, is actually go out in the field and see how the application is going to be on any kind of rules that you're going to apply. And then use a common sense, use your own mind, your own common sense. Don't rely on staff, because the science that you're getting from them is proving to be bad, just like it was around, around the pocket gopher. And there's people like Sam Garson now that know how to manipulate the system to get an application of rules for a financial benefit. He wrote a, he wrote an editorial in the paper, a letter to the editor in the paper here just a couple of days ago. And what he said were, "These rules were going to be good for guys like him that already own something, because it will restrict the land supply in this idea of supply and demand." Hit the value, his property will actually, will actually go up. But the expense of who? It's at the expense of the average citizen, the disadvantaged, the people that can't get through these rules, like Donna Baker, and Jimmy Howe, and Doby Fletcher, people that I've talked to out in the county. I would expect that you would look, look up for the people that can't, hire an attorney, and wade through and navigate through all of these rules that you want to impose, and think about the common sense application. And think about it in light of, we have had a Critical Area Ordinance in place for nearly 20 years, and it's our duty, statutory requirement, to review those and figure out if they're performing or not, and how we might apply those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Twenty-eight? Twenty-eight? Okay, twenty-nine? Still people on the list?
My name's Tobin Foché. I own a property, 238 143rd Avenue, near Tenino. I believe I'm one of the people that most directly impacted by these, this proposed Critical Area Ordinance. Purchased the property for the purpose of building a house for me and my family. The property, based on discussions I've had, bears to have a wetland on it. The revised buffers in the proposed document will effectively make the property of no value for building a house, near as I can tell. I'm concerned about that. You can use inflammatory language, but as I think about it, the word's too strong, but I just think a financial disaster for me. It's not inherited property, something I've earned, saved for with life and kids. I see that in the purpose statements in the proposed document, I see a disregard for property owners. I haven't seen anywhere in the couple of sections, what I've read in the purpose section, that there's been a consideration of property owners and their interests, their desires. And I think it's a misguided approach. I'll leave that with him.
Tobin, have you spoke with the staff about reasonable use exception on your property?
Yeah, I have, I have in the past. The reasonable use exemption with the non-conform use statutes in comparison make it so that I, if I were to build a house that I could afford now, as my family grows or as I have increasing needs, I wouldn't be able to expand that house. And the same with anybody that would be ready to purchase my property if I decided to move from that location. And I see that as a significant reduction in the property's value, making it possibly unsellable.
Okay. I would encourage you to have another discussion with the staff.
Can I take one of my cards? They're right there.
I don't know if you've gotten all of the answers maybe that you should have, but we've had discussions here about a 5,000-square-foot reasonable use exception. That doesn't mean that you cannot expand. If you build a 2,000-square-foot house, that you cannot expand that in the future, as long as it doesn't exceed that 5,000 square feet, are kind of my understanding. So I'd just like you to, they're better informed than I am, but I would encourage you to have that talk with them, because that's been my understanding.
I've had that discussion on the existing Critical Areas Ordinance, in regard to that existing ordinance. And I wasn't satisfied that my interest as a property owner were being protected.
Okay, well, yeah, if you've got Andrew's card, if you take that, have a discussion with him, and then Andrew, maybe you could let me know. And Andrew, feel free to give Tobin my contact information, because I'd like to hear both sides of the story when this is talked. Thank you. Number thirty-one?
Hi, my name is Mike Le. I live at 2331 Kaiser Road Northwest. I was born in Washington State, and I've lived in Thurston County for 14 years. And I'm a landowner. I own and live on a little over 23 acres in unincorporated Thurston County. Most of my land is in wetlands and forest, and Green Cove Creek flows through my property. As a landowner, I recognize that owning land is not like owning a watch or even a house, because it comes with responsibilities. To my neighbors and surrounding community to do good and not harm in my use of the land. To future generations to leave the land in at least as good a condition as I found it. I think that's my Boy Scout background. And sometimes I need my community and government to remind me of these broader and longer-term concerns. Sometimes I need regulations to remind me of the needs of the community and the needs of future generations. I also don't have time to keep up with scientific findings that shed light on how my use of the land might affect the health of my neighbors, my community, and future generations. And so I rely on my local government to keep up with the science and to keep it citizenly informed on new findings and revise its regulations to reflect the best available science. All this is just a lead-in to say that I welcome Thurston County's work to revise the Critical Areas Ordinance. And as other speakers have said, it really is long overdue. There's some tweaking of the draft ordinance that is needed. You've heard other speakers express concerns that some of the buffers need to be larger, and I share their concerns. I'm also concerned that the Critical Areas Ordinance seriously considers cumulative effects. It might be okay to grant one landowner a reasonable use exception to build in a wetland buffer. But if you grant 20 landowners on the same wetland to build in their buffers, you might have a problem. At the same time, the Critical Areas Ordinance may need to offer stronger incentives to landowners whose properties are affected by this ordinance. At the very least, this means reduced tax rates on portions of property affected by the ordinance. I know there's a little bit of, or at least a suggestion of it in the Critical Areas Ordinance. I guess I'd like to see more. In general, I'd just like to say I'm critical, I'm critical. Is that a Freudian slip? I'm grateful to county government for recognizing that really a healthy citizenry and a healthy economy require that we have a healthy environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirty-two?
Hello, my name is Donna Nickerson. I'm a board member of the NGO People for Puget Sound. And because our Olympia staff are out in the field working today, I will be representing our organization. Overall, in Puget Sound, we've lost 75% of our near-shore and coastal ecosystem function. And Thurston County, more recent data has confirmed that from the Thurston Regional Planning Council and the Washington Conservation Commission. Our key problems are water quality and loss of ecosystem function, largely due to hard armoring. So I'm going to focus on those two, water quality and our physical inhibitors for loss of ecosystem function. Buffers, riparian buffers, wetland buffers, and marine riparian buffers are essential in helping to keep our water quality, our streams and marine waters clean. Always in establishing buffers, it's going to be a negotiation between what we know science tells us to do and what we can kind of reasonably compromise in order to meet human needs and pressures from wanting to live near these critical areas. But we know that a minimum of 1,000 feet is needed to satisfy all the variable functions of a riparian, that a riparian area provides. They are infiltrating pollutants, so we can have clean water, trapping sediments, so it also deals with turbidity. And you have 150-foot buffer now for our marine areas. And we would urge you to look at differing approaches to the, depending on the conditions of the areas. For natural areas and conservancy areas in your SMP, we would urge you to have at least 250 feet. And that's also supported by Fish and Wildlife Guidance for Shorelines of the State. You're at a, Thurston County is at a, has an opportunity now as really the last of the Puget Sound counties to update the Critical Area Ordinance. And soon, other Puget Sound counties will be updating their ordinances. But they would have had to do so seven years ago. So you've skipped one part of the cycle, and you're ready to move forward. So you could be looking not at what others have done in the past, but taking leadership and going forward with what has come for the new science in the past, in the recent past, as well as new policy solutions that have to deal with incentives and ways to build green near to riparian areas.
Donna, I'm going to need you to wrap it up.
Okay, all right, thanks. Can I just finish a bit for the bulkheads, then? If others have had more time for...
I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I've only got two other speakers here on the list.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to let them go. We're going to take our lunch break. And I don't assume we're going to come back to a lot of other people signed up. I will give those people the opportunity to speak. And then if there's anybody that wishes to speak again, I'll use the chair's discretion to possibly allow people to speak again for another 25 minutes.
Great. Then if I could be first in line for that, please, thank you.
Number thirty-three?
Good morning. I'm Donna Weaver. I live down in South County. And I thank you for hosting this on a Saturday when people have time from their working day to come in. I appreciate that you took the time out of your holiday shopping to sit all day to listen to the pros and the cons of what's going on here. I'd like to speak to three things. One item that I noted on the revised edition was Item B of 24.01.040. The requirement to submit any plans in a digital map format. I know many people who, whether they're elderly, or they're poor, or they don't use the electronic age like the majority of us do. When they're working on items like this, that's enough to stop them in their tracks, because they don't know how to go about putting something in a digital map format. And I'd like to see that changed to a point of allowing them to submit hard copy, because I know the county has the ability to transfer it into a digital format. The second item I'd like to speak to is Item 24.01.050. It states that, excuse me, I need to take my glasses off, because I can't read with them. It states that relevant, non-scientific information, including legal, social, policy, economic, and land use issues, has also been considered. Everything I'm reading about this indicates to me that the economic issue is not being considered. I run a real estate brokerage down in South County. We work with people who are considering South County for business. And I will tell you that over the last two years, I've run into more and more clientele who look at South County and say, "Is it in Thurston County?" When I tell them yes, their answer is, "We're going to go elsewhere." The economic impact of losing business in the Thurston County area due to some of the stringent requirements is, I'm fearful for the future for the territory. The third item I'd like to speak to is definition. Webster's defines "critical" as exercising careful judgment. It also defines "hypercritical" as judging by unreasonable standards. I'd like you to consider whether we're trying to judge by unreasonable standards. I'd also like to see us build trust and work towards a solution that works for everyone. And thank you very much. My time is up.
Thank you. Number thirty-four?
Hi, I'm Barb Scavese. I live on Amherst Court in Olympia. And I want to thank you for working so hard on updating the Critical Areas Ordinance. We do need a strong Critical Areas Ordinance. It's vitally important to protect our wetlands and our streams and shorelines in order to recharge our groundwater, which is a source of drinking water in the county. And according to this book, "The Impacts of Climate Change on Washington's Economy", this was written in 2006, "Temperatures have already risen 1 and 1/2 degrees Fahrenheit in Washington, on average. Snowpack is decreasing, and our glaciers are receding. And these changes affect stream flow and water storage." And this document is on the Department of Ecology's website. So we need to protect all the areas where groundwater can be recharged because of these changes to our climate that we are already experiencing. And I support 250-foot riparian... And I support 250-foot riparian area buffer. And we do need to prohibit clearing and grading in these areas because the vegetation slows down stormwater discharge and reduces erosion into our lakes and rivers. And also, this helps maintain water temperature. If you maintain the vegetation, it provides shade and helps maintain the habitat for fish. And the shading helps, you know, keep the water from getting too hot when it's exposed to the sun all day long. And we need adequate buffers to protect our landslide areas and erodible bluffs, bluffs, especially along the Puget Sound area. Olympia, the City of Olympia, is preparing to manage up to 50 inches of sea level rise. They are taking this seriously. And I urge you to pass a very strong critical areas ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to take about a half hour recess for lunch. When we come back, if there's anybody else that's signed up that has not spoken, they'll have the first opportunity to speak. And then after that, I will use the chair's discretion to let anybody who wants to speak again. I'll decide on how much time per speaker at that point. And with that, we're in recess. So I do want everyone to know that the Planning Commission will of course be split up in the back as they go to lunch. Three, three, and three, so.